City Council meeting. Today is Tuesday, February the sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. The time is now six P M. And like I said, welcome to the city council meeting via Zoom. Would you please rise for the pledge allegiance and tonight I'm gonna hold a little flag up so maybe we can all see it. Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance. United States of America. Republican Republicans. With your stance.
Under God, indivisible, liberty and justice. Thank you. I salute you. Roll call, please.
DeBono?
Here.
Goodall?
Here.
Grego?
Here.
Ogletree?
Here.
Shu? Shu?
I'm muted, Frank.
Williamson? Grego?
Here. I think Frank is on, he's just that he's muted right now. Cause he wouldn't come up now it should be on. Okay, there you go. Okay, thank you. Item two, approval of the agenda. Anyone in council have any changes to the agenda? Not entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second?
Call of vote?
DeBono?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Grego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item three, policy item in staff reports, Mr. Valentine?
No items tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Item four, petitions or communications are overridden. Anyone listening in tonight have anything they would like to speak about? Okay, then on to item five, consent agenda approval. Item A, approval of regular meeting minutes of February the second, twenty twenty-one. Have a couple of typos I just wanted to mention. In the minutes, there was a lady that I had spoken with under Kathy Reynolds. It's under Kath- Kathy Reynolds. K A T H E U I R E N N E L S. And it said that I had met with her. I did not meet with her, but I had a discussion with her just during the Action Twenty-two meeting that was on. So that was the change there. Item B, reappointment of Pat Fletcher to the Library Advisory Board. Item C, approval of the bills for nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars and forty-five cents. And item D, approval of the payroll for February the sixth, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-one through February the nineteenth, twenty twenty-one for four hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. I did add one additional question in the last meeting. That circle with project that's going to go on to, let's say, West Main Street. Wasn't it going to be donated the balance of the money on that?
No, Mayor, the the other donation was for a sculpture down at the dog park.
Okay.
That was gonna be the only option.
Okay.
Correct. We've made, we've paid half of it. This is the final.
Okay. Okay, with the changes like the typos that I mentioned, could I have a motion, please?
Motioned.
So moved. Have a second?
Second.
Call of vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Grego? Grego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item six, public hearings. Ms. Garrett, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Are we going to take that item for Alta and move that down to D like we originally talked about?
Yes, please.
Okay. So what we're gonna do is we're going to make item six A, which is the transfer of ownership of a liquor store liquor license filed by Mountain Liquor and General Store LLC at eleven forty-four Robinson Avenue. Ms. Linda Baron, are you with us tonight?
Yes, um, yeah.
Okay.
Hello?
Hearing is now opened. Kim, will you please swear in, Ms. Baron?
Yes, will you raise your right hand, please? Ms. Baron?
Yes, can you hear me? Can you see me?
Yes.
Can you see me?
Yes. Okay. Do you swear and affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll turn it over to Mr. Downs. Mr. Downs, you want to talk or you have questions for Ms. Baron?
Yes, please. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Ms. Baron. Can you hear me okay?
Good morning. Good evening.
Good evening, ma'am. So, Ms. Baron, you are you are currently the liquor license owner for the the Mountain Liquor and General Store, is that correct?
Yes.
Ms. Baron, okay, thank you. And is it your request, is it your request tonight, ma'am, to transfer the the ownership of the liquor license from you individually to a limited liability company that is one hundred percent owned by you?
Yes.
Okay. And ma'am, is that proposed, I mean, is that limited liability company, is the name of that company Mountain Liquor and General Store LLC?
Yes.
Okay. And Ms. Baron, the premises we're talking about, is that eleven forty-four Robinson Avenue in Trinidad, Colorado?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
That's correct.
Okay, and Ms. Baron, how long have you owned either all or part of the business at eleven forty-four Robinson Avenue? How long have you owned that business and how long have you had the liquor license there, if I might inquire?
Uh, so here go on in June.
I'm sorry, so what year did you obtain the business?
Uh, June, like, we both here.
Okay, so you've had, you've had the business for a number of years. Is that fair to say, Ms. Baron?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and you, you have had a liquor license, a a, a packaged liquor store liquor license at that premises for for many years, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Now, Ms. Baron, I just want to ask you, because you've had it for so many years, I I'm assuming it's fair to say that you were over eighteen years of age, is that correct, ma'am? I'm not trying to be snarky. It's one of the questions I have to ask you. I'm sorry.
Yes, I, I'm a great grandmother, so.
Okay, all right, well, I'm, I'm not gonna try to make any witty remarks in response to that, ma'am. So, all right, and Ms. Baron, you, is it fair to say that you have a clean criminal history, ma'am? That you've never been in trouble with the law?
As far as I know, I, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, okay. So, Ms. Baron, I just want to ask you a couple of questions, ma'am. As part of your packet, there are a number of disciplinary actions from the Department of Revenue. And counsel is going to want to know about those things. And to summarize those matters, are those sting operations that were done by the Department of Revenue where one of your employees was alleged to have sold liquor to an undercover agent of the Department of Revenue?
Yes.
Okay. And is that what happened in every one of those actions taken by the Department of Revenue that is part of a packet?
That's correct.
Okay. So, Ms. Baron, I just want to make sure that you understand, ma'am. If counsel grants you a transfer of ownership, that you, you know that you're responsible for your employees and to ensure that they don't sell liquor to minors. I I know you know that, but I want to make sure that I emphasize that point. You understand, ma'am?
Yes, I do.
Okay. And, Ms. Baron, I, because time is kind of short tonight, I, I know you had an explanation for the year where you had two disciplinary matters. I, do you want to tell counsel about that, or is it okay if we kind of skip over that? I, I want to leave it to you, ma'am.
Yeah, I can explain that. Two thousand and sixteen, I lost my daughter, my oldest daughter, and her husband with the accident in Thornton, Colorado. And then six months later, no, five months later, we have the first time in thirty-one year in business. We got the rob robbery come, you know, rob our store. And then right after that, we got, my mother got lung cancer, you know, it's kind of out of the blue. And so it's overwhelming me and I have to depend, depending on my helper and my employee to helping me and, you know, I you know, over and over, we talk, we sit down and, you know, I have told them, make sure you check I D. I don't believe in selling to the minor, never have and I will never will. Then my mom had lung cancer, so I have to go to Denver almost every weekend for my mom since she not speaking English. So I have to take care of my mom and it just unfortunately that two thousand and seventeen that we have two violations and you know, you can, you can tell your employee or your helper all you want, but you know, I hope that they just do what they supposed to do because I, I was not here and when I, one of them, I was here when it's happened, when I'm taking care of my mother. And then my mom passed away in two thousand and seventeen, so it was very difficult for me for that year.
Okay, thank you.
But you know, I'm, I'm trying to do my best. I, I've been here thirty-five year and I very, very grateful to be able to live in this Trinidad County and do what I can to, you know, to be a good citizen.
Thank you, Ms. Baron. And I want to say something nice to you in response, but I'm not supposed to at this particular time, so please forgive me, but, but thank you, Ms. Baron, and I, I understand, ma'am. So I, I just want to make sure you understand, though, that your employees, if they sell liquor to minors, I mean, again, you could lose your liquor license. You understand that, ma'am, if this transfer of ownership is granted?
I do.
Okay, thank you. And so, Mayor and council members, I would submit this matter to you. I believe that you understand the criteria for a transfer of ownership, that being that the applicant is over eighteen years of age and has a good moral character. I know all of you know, Ms. Baron, but that notwithstanding, I would turn it over to you for any questions that you may have. Thank you, Ms. Baron.
Thank you.
Ms. Grego, do you have any questions for Ms. Baron?
No, sir, I don't.
Mr. Goodall, do you have?
I have nothing.
Ms. Ogletree?
Questions, Mayor, thanks.
Mr. Williamson's not with us. Mr. DeBono?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor, no questions.
Mr. Shu?
No, no questions.
Okay. The only question I have, Linda, this employee that sold liquor license, liquor to an underage employee, is that employee still with you?
No, most, all of them are.
Was that a no? I couldn't quite understand.
Yeah.
It was a no? Okay. That was my only question?
No.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, I know.
Okay. All right, I have no other further questions. Anyone listening in wants to speak for or against the transfer of ownership of a liquor store license to Ms. Baron at eleven forty-four Robinson Avenue? If not, hearing is now closed. Item one, which would be transfer of ownership liquor license filed by Mountain Liquor and General Store LLC at eleven forty-four Robinson Avenue by Ms. Linda Baron. Could I have a motion, please? So moved. Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Call of vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Grego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Ms. Baron, thank you and, and good luck with your transfer of ownership. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Item six B, public hearing for consideration.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Public hearing for consideration of an ordinance adopting the municipal court fine and fee schedule. Hearing is now open. Let's see, only that. Would that be, I think, Les, or would that be Ms. Sandoval that wants to give us any information?
Your Honor, Ms. Sandoval is, is with us, and I would ask that she kind of lead the, the charge on this. And Mayor, I did want to say, I think you may have mentioned, or you may have said six B, and I think this is six C. I heard six B. I'm sorry if I, okay, is it six B or six C?
Six B.
Okay, okay, thank you.
The reason, the reason for that is we took that transfer of the vault liver by Alta and turned that all the way down to D.
Okay, okay, sorry. I, I I was slow on the uptake. I didn't understand there would be a renumbering of matters. So, so thank you, Mayor. But, you know, one, one I did want to emphasize on, on on our behalf, those of us in municipal court, and that is Ms. Sandoval was indicating to me today or reminding me today that the fines that you see before you in the fine schedule, those aren't all the fines that are, or all the fees that are assessed necessarily in any traffic infraction. That's not, that doesn't represent everything that may be assessed. So I just want all of you to, to be aware of that. But with that having been said, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Sandoval, if I could, please, and have any of you ask questions that you may have of us. Ms. Sandoval, are you out there?
I'm here.
Do you have anything to add before I turn it over to council for questions?
I do not, Les pretty much said what I wanted to say.
Okay. Well, let's go ahead and get to council. Ms. Grego?
I have no questions.
About Mr. Goodall?
No, sir, nothing from me.
Okay, Ms. Ogletree?
No questions.
Mr. DeBono?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Shu?
No questions.
Okay, I have no questions. I think they were all pretty much answered at the, when we met the last time. Anyone in the audience that's listening in that speak for or against the consideration of ordinance adopting the municipal court fine and fee schedule? Not, hearing is closed. Second reading of an ordinance adopting the municipal court fine and fee schedule. Could I have a motion, please?
So.
Second?
Second?
Any further discussion from council? Call of vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Grego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item six C?
Thank you, Jess.
Public hearing for consideration of amending section twenty dash twelve dash five definitions of chapter twenty, vehicles and traffic. Article three, authority to impound vehicles and dispose of impounded vehicles of the code of the city of Trinidad, Colorado, to better define wrecked or junked vehicle. Hearing is now open. Mr. Downs, would that be you or would that be Ms. Sandoval?
Mayor, I, I believe that Ms. Garrett is, is the primary person on that. I'm, I'm happy to.
Okay, Ms. Garrett?
Mayor and members of city council, this is another ordinance that is before you to assist the police department in better enforcing the wrecked and junked vehicle ordinance. It expands the definition of junk vehicle, wrecked vehicle, to include vehicles that do not have current registration.
Okay. We'll go ahead and get some comment from council. Ms. Grego, questions?
I just have one, and I, I'm sure it's in the ordinance somewhere, but if the junk vehicles on private property and can't be seen from the street, is that still a violation?
No, it's vehicles that are visible to the public.
Okay, okay. I, I just needed a clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Goodall.
I have nothing.
Okay, Ms. Ogletree?
I have nothing.
Mr. DeBono? Yes, if a vehicle is visible on private property and not registered, is that a violation? Ms. Grego said that if it wasn't visible, but if the vehicle is visible, like on Colorado Avenue, if I park an unregistered vehicle on my property and people see it, is that still a violation?
That's what we're going after.
Okay.
With this ordinance. I did mean to answer for you, Ms. Garrett.
Any other questions, Mr. DeBono?
No, sir, thank you.
Mr. Shu?
No, I have nothing.
Okay, I don't have any other questions. Anyone in the audience wanting to speak against the or for the public or the ordinance amending the vehicle in traffic of junk vehicles? Hearing is closed. Item C one, second reading of an ordinance amending section twenty dash twelve dash five definitions of chapter twenty, vehicles and traffic, article three, authority to impound vehicles and dispose of impounded vehicles of the code of the city of Trinidad, Colorado, to better define wrecked or junk vehicles. Have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Call of vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Grego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item D, transfer of ownership of a fermented malt liquor, malt beverage off premises liquor license filed by CF Altitude LLC. Doing business as Alta, number sixty-two fifty-five at three oh five State Street. Mr. Greg Schumaker, are you listening in or someone else listening in for the applicant?
Mayor, I believe we have Dennis Dircksey as the representative for the applicant. And also their legal counsel, Mr. Kevin Coats, is appearing this evening as well. But the witnesses for them, I believe, are going to be Mr. Dennis Dircksey.
Okay. Hearing is now open. Could we please get them sworn in? I guess Dennis Dircksey and Kevin Coats, could we get them sworn in, please?
Please, raise your right hand. Do you swear?
Do you want counsel sworn in as well? I'm legal. I understand, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sorry, sorry.
It's okay. Do you swear and affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Downs?
Thank you, Mayor. There's a joke in there somewhere about swearing in legal counsel. I don't know. Just kidding, just kidding.
I was gonna tell it if you'd be there.
Yeah, I know. Good evening, gentlemen. Good evening. And, and thank you for being here. So, if I could, please, I I, I would like to begin by asking Mr. Coats a couple of questions as the, the legal counsel this evening. I, I spoke with Mr. Coats this morning, mayor and members of council, and, and this is a rather complicated application, just as you can tell by the, the size of the application packet. But Mr. Coats, would you please explain to council, if you would, the, the applicant I know, of course, is CF Altitude LLC, DBA Alta. But would you please explain to council what makes up CF Altitude LLC, please?
Absolutely, and, and thank you, thank you, folks, for hearing us here tonight. Essentially, what's happened is CF Altitude LLC has purchased the assets of the company Peaster Marketing who held this license before. And they also held approximately ninety-one other locations, convenience stores here in the state of Colorado. All of these assets were purchased, all of the stores were purchased by CF Altitude LLC. And up the chain, through the corporate chain, by parent companies. CF Altitude LLC is owned essentially about four layers up by Phillips sixty-six, which is publicly traded company, and Fortress Investment, which is a very, very large company, Fortress Investment Group. So, the master file letter that you have and the qualification persons that you have are Greg Schumaker, he comes from the Fortress Investment side. And Randall Fraley, he comes from the Phillips sixty-six side. And those were the designated members or officers essentially that were agreed to quite with state liquor in terms of the individuals that needed to be qualified associated with the transfer. So, there's nothing in the background, obviously, of Phillips sixty-six or Fortress Investment down the chain to CF Altitude LLC that makes these companies ineligible to have ownership or control with respect to this, this location or any of the other locations here in the state of Colorado. That's, that's the ownership part of this. The control part of it, and, and Mr. Dircksey can talk about all of this. But the, the control side of it is, is nothing's changed. The manager is still the same manager. That manager has come over from Peaster to CF Altitude. Mr. Dircksey is, as the individual vice president of Peaster, is now the vice president of CF Altitude. CF Altitude. And as well as we have Randy Mylum, who's also on this call or on this meeting, he's the area manager. So see, these individuals all worked for Peaster before, and now they're working for the LLC. In terms of their day-to-day operations, nothing has changed. But I hope that answers your question in terms of the ownership part of this, and obviously, the criteria is his moral character of the applicant, that being CF Altitude LLC.
Okay, and thank you, Mr. Coats. And I want to ask Mr. Dircksey, sir, is it true that you then are going to be the local manager for Alta, or the regional manager? I heard that Mr. Milan is going to be a regional manager also, but are you going to be managing the facilities here locally?
I've been associated with that store since, I think it's been, we took on it probably about eight years ago now. I'm actually the vice president of retail operations for CF Altitude, and I was for Peaster Marketing. I oversee a hundred and six stores and have over seven hundred employees. So day-to-day, I won't be in that store. I'm in that store probably once a quarter. Randy is more of a local representative, but I would say he's in the store a lot more than I am.
Okay.
And I can answer any questions on our business and how we operate things and everything.
Well, and I...
Just adding that the store...
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, the store manager, I think maybe is what you're referring to. The store manager is Melissa Boyd, and she continues and remains as the store manager on a day-to-day basis.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'm mostly concerned with our purposes for this evening, for having people, you know, like basically give testimony regarding the factual assertions in the application and people who are going to be responsible for the liquor license. And I understand, I mean, we have kind of a broad cross-section of responsible people. And, sir, they call you Randy, how do you pronounce your last name, please?
Mylum.
Mylum. Mr. Mylum, you, sir, are going to be a regional manager, is that fair to say?
Yeah, we're area manager. I cover this area.
Mr. Downs?
Yes.
I don't know if we need to interrupt, but was Mr. Mylum sworn in also, or does he need... Just going to bring that up.
Good.
Thank you for bringing that up. Mr. Mylum, would you please get sworn in by Kim, please?
Do you swear? Hold on. Do you swear in affirm the testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so, Mr. Mylum, will you, you'll be one of the people responsible for, I mean, not the day-to-day operations, I heard what Mr. Coats said about the store manager, but you will be one of the responsible parties overseeing the operations for stores in the area, is that fair to say?
That is correct.
Okay. And you, both you and Mr. Dircksey, you both understand that you are responsible parties for the liquor license if this transfer of ownership is granted to CF Altitude LLC?
Yes, I am.
Okay. And you, you know, Mr. Coats referred to the master file on, file with the Department of Revenue, and that, that master file is what the Department of Revenue has for the background investigations for Randall Frelix and Gregory Schumaker, is that correct? If you know.
Yes, I'm not sure.
Okay, all right, I'll, we'll rely on the representations of Mr. Coats with respect to that. So, okay, and both of you, how many, how many of these kinds of liquor stores, these fermented malt beverage off premises liquor licenses, how many are you responsible for or will you be responsible for if all the transfers of ownership that are pending go through?
I think, I think, Les, I can probably, I have kind of a statement that I read at these, and the last time I was there, it was in person, so I got a chance to see everybody there. This is all, so it's kind of awkward, but I have a statement I can read you that might explain a lot of things like our, what our values are, more of our moral character in the stores, what our training programs are, and, I mean, it would take about five minutes if you'd like me to read that in.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna dispense with that. I, you know, I appreciate that, sir. These are pretty low bars to clear in terms of a legal criteria for a transfer of ownership. And so I just, I want to make sure that, that it is clear to council that you, your company, your LLC and the other, you know, the LLCs that you came from, that you have a number of liquor licenses already, and you have passed muster with respect to moral character requirements for the state of Colorado Department of Revenue, as well as other municipalities. Is that correct, Mr. Mylum, Mr. Dircksey?
Yes, it's correct. We have eighty-two licenses, seventy-five in Colorado.
Okay, seventy-five, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to deprive you of the opportunity, sir, to read your statement. I, I understand that that was in there. I would love to hear that. I'm just trying to keep things brief. You know, we take too much time. I'd like it to be me. No, just kidding, I'm just kidding. I appreciate your, so seventy-five, and, and everybody associated with this, you are, you were committed and dedicated to lawful operations, is that fair to say?
Yes, yes.
Everybody is over the age of eighteen?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And these liquor licenses that you hold, are they very important assets to you, and assets that you want to maintain and keep and be able to utilize with respect to the sale of fermented malt beverages as an off premises consumption item?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Mr. Coats, do you have anything else you would like to add, sir?
I just, I would ask, Mr. Dircksey, the statements I made in terms of that ownership, those were correct. In other words, there is a master file, those two individuals that are listed on the master file have been vetted by the state, and there's nothing in the background of those individuals that make them ineligible to have ownership or control over a liquor licensed establishment, is that correct?
Were you, were you asking Mr. one?
I was asking Mr. Dircksey.
Yes.
Yes, yeah. Yes, just for the record, in terms, you're the sworn witness, you can, the statements that I made early in the proceedings, is that right?
Yes.
Very good.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Coats, thank you, Mr. Mylum, Mr. Dircksey. Mayor, council members, I turn it over to you for any questions you may have.
Okay, we'll turn it over to council this time. Ms. Gregel, do you have any questions for either of these gentlemen?
I have no questions.
Mr. Goodall?
I have nothing.
How about Ms. Ogletree?
No questions, Mayor.
Mr. De Bonham?
No questions, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schuh?
No, no questions.
Okay, I don't have any questions. Anyone that is listening in tonight, want to speak for or against the transfer of this Hearing is now closed. Motion for the transfer of ownership of fermented malt beverage off premises liquor license filed by CF Altitude LLC, doing business as Alta, number sixty-two fifty-five, at three oh five State Street. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion, further discussion from council? Call a vote, please.
Fana?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Gregel?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Schuh?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Good luck, gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thanks for your flexibility tonight. I think we were a little bit late, so thanks for giving us a little bit of time for, from that other matter. Really appreciate it. Hope you all have a wonderful night.
You, too.
Thank you, thank you so much. Take care.
Item seven unfinished business, we have none. Item eight, miscellaneous business, consideration of thirteen oh six Colorado Brownfields program, statement of work for the Fox Theater. Would have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Before I turn it over to council, I do have one question for Ms. Clark. It shows that myself, Phil Rico, is listed as contractor in there. Is there any particular reason for that?
Thank you, Mayor. The CD-PHE refers to the, to the city as being the contractor that's seeing that the work is performed.
Okay. All right, well, go ahead and take it from there, Ms. Clark, and see if you have any, if you have any other items that you want to discuss concerning that.
Okay, just briefly, CD-PHE approved funding in the amount of a hundred and eight thousand dollars through the thirteen oh six Colorado Brownfields program to assist with the abatement of the Fox Theater. And this statement of work will finalize the agreement with CD-PHE if council chooses to approve Mayor Rico enacting the document. And that's really all I had, Mayor, unless there are questions.
Okay, well, we'll get council's questions. Ms. Gregel?
I have no questions.
Mr. Goodall?
Nothing from me, Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Ogletree?
Questions, I were answering at the work session.
Okay. Mr. De Bonham?
No questions, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schuh?
No questions.
Okay. And just kind of for the record, it just, this program is for the abatement of the asbestos lifting verb ways toward the program, or for the Fox Theater, and it's for the two retail bays up in the front, so that's what that's all about. No further discussion? Could you call a vote, please?
Fana?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Schuh?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item A B, consideration of Trinidad Entertainment District Incorporated, modification to allow attachment of Sila V Incorporated and Business as the Cafe at one thirty-five East Main Street, Jody Van Buskirk?
Buskirk.
Buskirk, are you listening in tonight?
Mayor, Nancy Lucky was supposed to join the meeting this evening to represent the Entertainment District as the president. She wasn't sure that she was going to be able to. I'm happy to answer questions, but the application basically speaks for itself. They're trying to expand on the number of entities that are, that are attached to the district, and so Jody requested attachment, the Entertainment District approved, and now they're asking the city council to approve, finalize the attachment.
Okay. Could have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
So moved.
Ms. Garrett, any other, any other comments besides what you just said?
None, Mr. Mayor, that's it.
Council, does council have any questions, and Ms. Gregel?
I have none.
Okay, Mr. Goodall?
Just a quick comment, you know, since I got this Entertainment District thing going, and we kicked it off with the Blues Fest, I'm happy to see it continue to grow and look forward to the future with more utilization of it for the betterment of downtown. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Ogletree? Ms. Ogletree, you have any questions?
Questions, thank you.
Okay, Mr. De Bonham?
No questions, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schuh?
No, I have nothing.
And like I said, it's good to see an additional business joining in on the Entertainment District. Be nice to get a couple of others, so if things begin to quiet down from COVID-19 this summer, maybe we can have some additional entertainment downtown with these people could, the businesses could thrive a little bit more, so it'd be good to see. With that, call a vote, please.
Fana?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Schuh?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item C, consideration of Jacob Services' contract for operations, maintenance, and management services renewed. Have a motion, please? So moved.
Before I second, do we need to specify which direction we're going with this, how many years in our motion?
Ms. Garrett, what do you recommend?
Mayor, I think councilman Goodall is correct. We, there are three, three options we discussed pretty extensively in work sessions. There's the five-year renewal option, the ten, and the fifteen. As discussed, CH2M has done a fine job for us, and from my standpoint, either the ten or fifteen-year option is very doable. The fifteen-year gives us a little more savings long-term, but also adds the GIS setup. So I think the motion should include which option, five, ten, or fifteen-year?
Okay, before we get into that, it was a question I was going to have. Do we have representation from Jacob's side on?
Yes.
John?
Yes, I'm on.
John, this is Mayor Rico. You know, something I wanted to ask you, if this is doable, you know, I like the initial distribution system GIS setup. I'm concerned about footing about the fifteen-year plan. Is there any way that we could put that into the ten-year plan? Is that something your company would consider?
Yeah, I'm sure it's something the company would consider. We'd have to redraft the documents and stuff for it to reflect the GIS movement into the ten-year, but it is something we could do.
And I know that, of course, there would be additional costs, you know, per year, I understand that, but I just, I just, I like the product, and of course, that would be up to council if they want to amend that in there with this option, which option we want to go with. So, Mr. Valentine, what would you think about that?
Yeah, no, that's an option, Mayor. They have the, the costs that were included for your request of just going à la carte and selecting that option from the menu. The ten-year agreement would be the base fee of one million, one hundred and sixty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight per year, and then...
I'm not on a conference call. Can I call you later?
GIS, GIS option would be a miserable one thousand, fifty-one thousand, four hundred and eight dollars and ninety-six cents, so I think they could, they could write that into the contract as an à la carte item, or as a kind of out-of-scope separate contract.
Let's go ahead and maybe get some discussion on that particular item before we get into a motion. I think from council, see what their thoughts are, and then we can decide on that option, you know, the ten or fifteen-year with the additional GIS.
I, I have somewhat of a problem with the fifteen-year. Not a problem, but I hate to encumber the city for that amount. But with that being said, I think if we do the ten-year and do the à la carte for the GIS setup, I don't think we're going to be saving any money. It probably is counterproductive to do that. I don't know, Mr. Valentine, what do you think?
If the, if the GIS is built in, it is an added savings if we go with the fifteen-year. I totally understand the fifteen-year commitment, but the... the 15-year. Well, I, I totally understand, uh, the 15-year, um, commitment, but the, the original contract has, uh, very, uh, well-laid-out options for, um, opting out if in five, 10 years, we, there's, there are outs in the contract. So, yeah.
Okay. I didn't re, I did realize that. Thank you. With that explanation, I, I would be more inclined to do the 15-year agreement. That's all.
Mr. Goodall?
I agree. We have such a long, uh, already established working relationship. I think, um, we get the biggest bang for our buck. They've proven themselves. I, I'm happy with the 15-year, uh, contract here.
Ms. Ogletree?
I would just echo what Councilwoman Grego and Councilwoman Gao said, and I, I would support a 15-year agreement.
Okay, Mr. De Bono?
Yes, I support a 15-year if it's a, um, savings for the city and Jacobs has been more than reputable over the years. I, I, I agree with the other three former, ex, uh, former councilmen, sorry.
Uh, Mr. Schu?
Yeah, I, I agree with the 15. I think that'll work for us.
Okay. Uh, we'll leave it at that, and let's go ahead and we'll, uh, take a motion and we'll take some additional discussion.
Do I, uh, amend my motion to make a motion for an add 15 years to the motion?
Okay. Second?
I will second that.
Okay, discussion. Ms. Grego?
No discussion.
Okay, Mr. Goodall?
Nothing further for me.
Uh, Ms. Ogletree?
Anything further? Thanks.
Okay, Mr. De Bono?
I'm good, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Schu?
Uh, nothing.
Okay. Uh, the questions that I had, a couple of them here on the Basic Ion Dashboard, the exhibit A still shows the scope of work includes the natural gas distribution system. Mr. Valentine, is that going to stay in there?
Uh, no, Mayor. The natural gas was, uh, discussed, but, John, I believe that is just for the, uh, the wastewater, correct?
The Ion City Dashboard is just, uh, it's, it's a, just communicates with our systems for the wastewater and collection system. Um, I'm not sure, the document in front of me, I don't have the natural gas or water being on there. Um, I don't know if it's just a different version or an edited one or what.
I, like I said, I did see that in there. You might just double-check that to make sure if it's still in there, just wait to remove that. Uh, second question I had is it Rick, it says in there that there may be some gross taxes that may need to be added into the cost. Uh, are there any particular gross taxes that you're aware of at this time that would be added? None that you can think of?
No, no.
Okay. Those are all the questions that I had. Uh, there's no further questions from council. Would you please call a vote?
De Bono?
Yes.
Kedal?
Yes.
Creago?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Thank you, John. Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
Thank you all for your time. I appreciate it.
Uh, item D, consideration Colorado Department of Transportation IGA for exit 11. Have a motion, please? So moved. Second?
So.
Okay. Uh, discussion. Mr. Valentine, have anything in addition to what we've already been, uh, discussing?
Uh, no, Mayor, other than, uh, today, I sat in on a meeting that's called a FOR meeting with the CDOC personnel. They are, since they're fast-tracking this, um, they're reviewing it internal with bridge and, and traffic and all the disciplines for construction and design of this, I mean, design and construction of this, this exit 11. Um, they are scheduled for an add date of April 8th, and they are pushing to, to get this, uh, out to bid. So, add, adding out to bid for April 8th, and the estimated construction of the, uh, project is 15 months. So, the sooner we get it going, the better. Um, as far as the IGA, nothing has changed from our discussions at work session.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Downs, I'm not sure. Did you look at that agreement? Uh, was it, did you have any issues with it or did you take it?
I looked at it, and I have no issues with, with the agreement, Mayor.
Uh, council, Ms. Grego?
No, I have no questions. I just want to know, do we get to vote on the color?
Color's done. Color's done.
Oh, okay. Darn.
That was less, Oak Crow or something like that?
Yes.
Oak Crow, yeah. I couldn't remember.
Mr. Goodall? Any questions? Mr. Goodall?
Uh, I have nothing, and I believe Mike was the one who said okay on that. So blame him if you don't like it, Ms. Grego.
I am.
Ms. Ogletree?
We may have, uh, we may have typed up this last time. I just couldn't remember. Do you foresee needing to hire, uh, maintenance people, uh, to do this work?
Um, currently, um, no, but it is a waste out, outside of our core area for maintenance. Um, it'll, it'll stress the department steering stone removal for the, uh, walking path that they, they, they've made a 10-foot walking path. But we are, uh, through our, uh, marijuana funds, able to procure some, some good equipment. So, that helps, uh, and we can move faster and more efficient with the new equipment. The council has approved. Um, the landscaping is, and I confirmed it today again, that it is low maintenance, um, zero scapeing type landscaping that doesn't require watering. Um, so, um, we are going to work it into there. It, you know, as, as we continue on with the way the city's going, we may have to add personnel, but right now, we are, um, we are good with it.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Mr. De Bono?
Uh, no questions.
Mr. Schu?
Um, Mike, just to make sure when we do that, if we get some extra paint, in case we have to do the vandalism on there, the right color. And also, we have to put power out there, uh, on our pole line. Are we going to run the pole line, uh, along, uh, the Santa Feige Trail deal? Because there might be some, it might be a good idea if we add some lighting added to that, uh, trail going out there.
That is correct. Uh, CDOC has agreed to participate, uh, with us and, and help, uh, fund that pole line, that extension. Um, I've already spoke to Mr. Duran, and, uh, we'll, we'll be able to light up that section of Santa Feige Trail from, oh, basically, uh, the radio station all the way out to Holiday Inn. So, it's a, it's a bonus there too.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Valentine, is that going to be overhead or is it going to be underground?
Uh, it, it's going to be overhead. The, it, the cost, uh, to go underground, uh, would be too much for them to absorb, and, and our powered light can't absorb that. And, um, the old highway that is Santa Feige Trail out there, there's no, no utilities under it. So, they're all to the outside. So, we've got water, gas, sewer, um, Comcast and fiber optics in, in that area. So, trenching is kind of futile. So, we're going to have to place overhead lines.
Okay. I have no other, I have no further questions, and, uh, they still have, I think that was part of that $200,000 extra. Is that what it was, Mr. Valentine?
No, that's, that's, uh, that's something else. This is part of, uh, they added it into, uh, the, the plans for the exit 11. So...
Uh, from the time that they put the bid out to the time that they, uh, anticipate, uh, you know, giving the thumbs up to approve is how long did they say?
Um...
Just to start?
I think they have a month and a half of, uh, ad, you know, they have their ads out for, uh, about six weeks so that contractors can review, and then they have their pre-bid meetings and then their pre-construction meetings. So, approximately, uh, month and a half, six weeks from add date to award and contractor on site.
Okay, so from the time they put it out to bid to the time it, uh, it's finished work by looking at 22 months approximately, I'm guessing, plus or minus, somewhere in there. Okay.
Close to two years.
Sure.
Okay. Uh, no further questions. We'll call a vote, please.
De Bono?
Yes.
Kedal?
Yes.
Creago?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item E, resolution authorizing expenditure of marijuana revenue received by the City of Trinidad fourth quarter of 2020. Have a motion, please? So moved. Second?
Second?
Um, Ms. Navarette, are you on or Mr. Valentine, do you want to take that?
I believe Cheryl's on, Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Navarette, would you please fill us in?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so, we discussed this at our previous work session. Um, fourth quarter marijuana taxes yielded 1.1 million 129,233 dollars. Um, we have allocated according to council's, um, review and, I believe, acceptance. The only item that was added in addition was the 2021 Christmas decorations for 2064, which, um, utilizes every, um, aspect of the 65% in city projects. Uh, you can see that we broke out on the resolution, the incentives of the 4% share will total 115,408 dollars, and then the 1% to be distributed by TCF totals 28,852 dollars. Uh, total 65% city projects, total 734,002 dollars. And then finally, what will go to reserves is 338,770 dollars. The total allocated for this quarter is 1,217,032. But if you recall, we discussed about the money that was allocated in the second and, or allocated slash unallocated in second and third quarter. It never was, um, assigned to any particular outside agency. So, that amount is also included in that 1,217,000. And that's all I have.
Okay. Uh, let's see if council has any questions. Ms. Grego?
Okay, I'm kind of dense here. But the money that the nonprofits didn't spend for second and third quarter is included here in these figures, Cheryl? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct. Yes. If you look at the top of the resolution...
Okay.
See that we brought in 1.1 million dollars for fourth quarter. And then at the end of the resolution, it shows 87,799 that was not, um, assigned to outside agencies. That's what gives the total of the 1.2 million.
Okay. How, how soon do we have, do we have to physically take the money out of that reserves fund, or our rainy day fund, and put it in a, a specific, uh, account right away because of what the accountant told us last year?
I've, I've established a, the rainy day fund or the 5% tax fund, and we'll deposit in there. And it's a reserve fund, so we just title it as committed. And as long as we, um, designate it as committed in our investment fund, it's technically committed as per council's direction.
Okay. Okay. I have no further questions.
Mr. Goodall?
I'm good.
Ms. Ogletree?
Questions, thank you.
And I, Mr. De Bono?
No questions, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schu?
Uh, no questions, but thanks, Cheryl, for putting that Christmas deal in there for, that, that's going to be a good deal for us, I think. Thank you.
Okay, I have no questions. Uh, call a vote, please.
De Bono?
Yes.
Kedal?
Yes.
Creago?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
On to item nine, council reports, starting with Ms. Grego.
I, uh, did a fill-in for the mayor last Friday with CML's Policy Committee, and it was quite lengthy a meeting, but I just want to give you a couple of them that I was really surprised that, that the legislature's even considering these. But one is the, uh, third-party delivery of bill, of beer and malt beverages, uh, by a, like, would be like Lyft or Uber. The, the, uh, policy council opposed that 100%. There was nobody in agreement with that. So, that went down heavy. And the second one that was pretty interesting is, uh, is legislation that the ACLU has requested. It's called the jail, jail depopulation bill. It started with COVID, trying to get people stay, keep the, the prison population law. So, when I saw how far down or how high they were going on some of these, uh, crimes, it just, I couldn't believe it because they're talking about do, uh, no jail time for, for felonies, class four to six. Now, I don't know what a, a class four, the five or six felony is, but I know a felony is, is a pretty serious offense. And then they wanted to, uh, have a, no monetary bonds unless you don't show up to court for three times. And luckily, there was a judge in, uh, the meeting with us, and she said, uh, it was a judge Kurtz from Morbata, and she claimed, she stated that the courts are having problems with that now, and this would only increase the problems. And so, that was, was, uh, that was, uh, opposed as well. So, I, those are the two real, uh, extensive ones that I, I don't want to take up any of your time because I'm sure those of you that were on the session last week with CML also got that information.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay, Mr. Goodall?
I have one more thing.
Go ahead.
Oh, no, sir, I have one more, one more. If I ever hear the word, sure. Have you got, do you guys ever listen to The Honeymooners on television? Remember Jackie Gleason?
Yep.
That's what I, that's what I want to do to Zoom.
To the Moon Alice.
A-Z. To the Moon Alice with Zoom. That's all.
Um, Mr. Goodall?
The only I have is to remind everybody that this Saturday, we will be having the Polar Plunge at Trinidad Lake State Park at the boat ramp. If you want to see a bunch of people that obviously have something wrong with them jumping some ice-cold water, come on out. My team is the Frozen Vesticles.
Isn't that the 27th, Rusty?
Yes, it is, and I'll be jumping again. So, anybody that wishes to throw in any sponsorship money, all the money goes to the Special Olympics. Um, it's a great cause. You can visit the Polar Plunge in the website. It'll take you to the Special Olympics and show you, it'll show you what this money goes to and s- and show, it'll show you what this money goes to and, uh, the events and sponsors for the, uh, all the people. So that's all I have.
Ms. Ogle Tree?
Add a couple of things. Um, lately I have been, well, ever since I've been involved in the city, I've been doing things that pertain to the arts and creative endeavors. I was on the creative district and I'm on the oversight board for space to create. And for a while, I've been thinking that another thing I'd like to get involved with is the arts and culture board. Um, I spoke and and it's a long story that I won't go into, but Councilman De Bono and I talked and he would be fine if I took the the advisor or liaison role for that board. Um, so I'd like to ask that I be considered for that by by council. Um, and Audra explained to me that I just kinda needed to let you know in in this thing and she'll take it from there. If there's any concerns, let me know. Um, and then the other thing that's been brought to my attention by a bunch of people is that, um, we've had some pretty severe weather, uh, the past couple of days, life-threatening kind of temperatures. And the city's not made a determination to do anything about, uh, some kind of an emergency shelter, as far as I know. But there are groups that are, um, providing hotel rooms to people, um, with donations. And so I just wanted people to know that that is going on out there. I think some of it is through area churches. Um, but it's just something to think about, I think, for us, and I'd like to talk about sometime in a work session or something, um, about whether or not there's an idea that of some area of the city that we could use for emergency shelter when the temperatures are so cold that being outside alone will kill you. Um, so that's just something I wanted to throw out there.
Okay, uh, Mr. De Bono?
Uh, just to piggyback on what Rusty said, I I do have an interview with Carlos Chacon, uh, for the Polar Plunge tomorrow. Great cause, Special Olympics. I remember back in the day, we had a Special Olympics event, uh, at the middle school back in the eighties and it was, uh, something to remember. So, yeah, go out there, could have a Polar Plunge this weekend, too, but, uh, paramedics would have probably had to have people from out of town come and save people, but, yeah, it's good.
Okay, uh, Mr. Shu?
No, I have nothing to report, Phil, thank you.
Okay, I have a few things I just wanted to go over. The first thing I wanted to go over with is, uh, uh, see if everybody, this is correct for everybody, a while back, I asked, uh, Ms. Garrett to give me a list of, uh, the people, what, um, organizations that you're liaisons to, uh, starting with Mr. Shu, you're on urban forestry, correct? Anything else besides?
No, that's, that's all, Phil.
Okay.
And we need to get some people on that board.
Okay, uh, Mr. De Bono, I think you're kind of just the liaison, uh, to the partners for a drug-free community and you're gonna get off the arts, is that correct?
Yes, and I'm also on the board for Woden, veterans.
Okay, and the reason for this is so that, uh, we can all know that, uh, what, uh, what are the areas that we are involved with. Uh, Mr. Goodall, I think you are on parks, you're also the Fort Carson liaison and also working with the, uh, 200th anniversary for the Santa Fe Trail, anything else?
No, sir, that is it right now.
Okay, uh, Mr. Williamson is on library, South Central Council of Government and T P R. Um, Ms. Griggo, you're on the Main Street and you've been my C M L proxy, anything
That's it.
Okay, uh, Ms. Ogle Tree, you're on the space to create commons oversight and you're you're now going to jump into the arts and culture, anything else?
And I'm on the Trinidad State Advisory Council.
Okay, T S J C Advisory, okay. And, uh, what I'm into, I'm into, I'm on tourism, the Action 22, C M L policy, Fisher's Peak, I'm, uh, working with Five Star Program, Southwest Chief and the Fort Carson liaison, that's what I'm doing. So, uh, what I could do is get this entire list and, uh, Ms. Garrett, if you can send it out that way, everybody knows what we're all doing.
Mr. Mayor, I was always asked, I was also asked to be on the Mount Carmel wellness board.
The mayor still wins, he's on the most, by far. If you were doing the math at home, sorry, just thought I chimed in, you, you slackers. No, I'm sorry, I'm muting, I'm muting.
Bear with me one second, I got some other stuff here. Okay, uh, something, few things I wanted to report on is today we had the initial Five Star Program, uh, for COVID-19. And, uh, there are some businesses that are interested in participating. All of there seems to be a lot of confusion as to whether they, the cost, you know, how much time is it gonna take and all this stuff for the businesses. So what we're going to do is go to get into, uh, going out and asking for applications. And then we also need to get, uh, you know, our house in order as to what kind of rules and regulations we need to follow up on. So, uh, that's beginning and this will be able to allow, if we get accredited by the state, uh, from the C D P H E, we will be able to, these businesses will be able to be allowed to operate at a greater capacity, uh, than those that are not, uh, Five Star Program people. Uh, last week, uh, I know that, uh, Mr. Goodall and Ms. Ogle Tree attended the legislative day, uh, from the C M L, that was on Thursday. It was interesting that they were talking about having, if I'm correct, there was 130 million dollars that they talked about for shovel-ready projects that they're going to be concentrating on. And I believe it's for the Main Street program, so I think that, uh, probably gotta get a little more definite on that as to what the entire program's all about. Um, there was also some talk about affordable housing. These are some bills that were, by the way, uh, uh, there was also some talk about limited gaming, uh, which would be all the bars in the state could have gaming machines. Um, and I, I mentioned this to Mr. Downs, there's a bill that's coming up on open meetings, uh, non-substantive communication. Uh, for instance, if I wanna send out and say, schedule a meeting with, uh, all of council, I could do that as a blast email, there's a few other things. But I asked Mr. Downs to keep his ear, uh, his ear open on that, to get a good definition if this thing goes through. Uh, and I think, uh, probably Debbie can get us a copy of that bill to Mr. Downs. Uh, Debbie, Debbie, if you're listening, if there's a copy of this bill already in place, if you forward that to Mr. Downs so he could begin to read up on that, it'd be interesting to see what that's, what's coming down to the pipe with that. Um, energy sustainability, that was one that I had some real heartburn with, uh, 'cause they're talking about having to, um, do some real energy efficient stuff and it's gonna be costly, I think, to businesses. And in this time, I just don't think that businesses are going to be able to, uh, afford that, uh, and probably would want not afford that and it could cause them to be, it could be very costly. Uh, there was some talk about transportation. Uh, there was also another item, it's called low-income utility help, but it's an opt-in provision. What it would do is, uh, if we decided to opt-in on that, if it does come to fruition or a dollar for electric and gas would be taken or added to the bills of the constituents and it would go to help out low-income utilities, to help them pay for your utilities. Uh, like I mentioned last week in my State of the City address, uh, listened to this Mike Wallace from the National League of Cities who was on there, on the COVID-19 relief package, uh, that the, uh, president, uh, is talking about. And there's gonna be some pretty flexible spending if that comes to fruition as well. Uh, and we got a message today, if anybody looked at their emails, uh, Highway of Legends got designated as the, on the National Scenic Byway List. So congratulations to whoever worked on that project, so it's good to hear. Um, Mr. Valentine, I mentioned to you last, at the time, that, uh, that lady from C S U, Cathay Reynolds, and I've gotta call into her and I'm gonna, uh, she's supposed to email, so the, get some ideas, there's some areas that she can help us with, and then I'll just pass it all over to you, that way you kinda eliminate some time to help, takes the time away from you, so you don't, you know, bogged down with some items that maybe aren't necessary. So I'll try to find some information before I turn over. Actually, I do know that there's a lot of stuff, the legislation, legislate, legislature just, you know, just started today. Um, they'll have quite a length of bills, I'm sure, coming down, so we'll just have to be very, um, betuned here to, uh, what's coming down, what's being introduced and what may be passing. Um, that's all I have to report, turn it over to Mr. Valentine.
Mr. Mayor, could I jump back in real quick?
Sure.
Um, I forgot to mention earlier, but I I did read, I don't know if everyone else got, uh, an email or where, I can't remember where it come across, but, um, the Attorney General did reach the agreement with, on opioid.
Nice.
And I don't remember how many hundreds of millions of dollars it was, but it seems like it was a pretty large amount for the state of Colorado or anyone that joined in with the state on that lawsuit.
Oh, good, good to hear, 'cause I know that there were some, uh, last year, when they were asking for people, there were some people that actually opted out, they wanted to go on their own. And, uh, so that's interesting, those of us that stayed in, uh, were in good shape on it. Mr. Valentine?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Um, not a lot to report, just a reminder that, uh, this Thursday at 9:00 a.m. we'll be, uh, having some interviews with, uh, Monument Lake Perspective, uh, L C S. We had three proposals, we'll be going through those. And then, um, I know it's, uh, it's come around really quick and we haven't get the invites, but I believe Audra polled all of you in our housing forum that that we need to send out invites to, um, is scheduled for February 22nd at 3:00 p.m. in the afternoon to to get that going, uh, for, um, for that. And, um, let's see. Debbie just chimed in in the chat, she, she has been busy with all the legislatures that's going on also, and she's, uh, going to give us a summary, uh, soon. There's just a lot of bills that, uh, haven't even been introduced yet that are coming forward. I think, uh, the COVID year, uh, they they piled up, so that now they're trying to get them all through. So, anyway, that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay.
Uh, can I ask a question?
So, February the 22nd, that's Monday, that's going to be our work session, in other words, correct?
Correct.
Uh, Mr. Downs?
Mayor, can I ask a question of Mr. Valentine? Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Um, uh, you sent us an email about interest group discussions for the Fisher's Peak State Park. Is the city going to, is someone at the city answering that for the city or are we supposed to all respond to that? Or it, I wasn't sure exactly what to do with that.
Right, so, uh, that is put out by by the planning, uh, group. They're asking for input from from everyone, so it's it's out to, uh, everyone. So, um, I would definitely, uh, you know, let them know your thoughts. I don't know, Mayor, you're you're on those, uh, one of those committees and I think Council Goodall and Councilwoman Griggo.
Yeah, T H K, like I said, they are the, uh, people responsible for the master plan and they are just going out to asking, uh, anyone in the community. So individually, we can, uh, if we have any concerns or questions or any kind of opinions, uh, you can call in and and talk to them and, uh, you know, state what your, what your interests are, uh, what your concerns are. Uh, so, you know, you, and and anyone and everyone can participate.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't misunderstanding something. But so it's a, an online questionnaire that anyone can respond to.
Right.
Okay, thank you, Nicole.
Okay, Mr. Downs?
Mayor, thank you. Uh, Mayor and council members, and I should say that Debbie Wagner, um, messaged us that she said over 200 bills were introduced into the legislature and also Councilman Goodall messaged in and the settlement, the opioid settlement was for over 573 million dollars. Um, that's, that's amazing. But, um, in terms of my report, I only have one thing, and that is to let you know that murals, yes, murals, well, like the insane uncle we have locked in the basement, the murals, no, but murals will be on the work session agenda on March 8th. I know that that is exciting news, right, Mike? Right, that's, okay, all right, good. So it it will be a draft ordinance of, um, the the mural ordinance, so that you will be able to look at that and and, uh, give us your feedback in terms of what you find favorable and and hopefully you're just gonna love the draft ordinance that's before you. But but that is all I have, everyone, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, uh, anyone else have anything else to bring forward that you forgot? Call for adjournment, motion? Second?
Second.
Call a vote?
De Bono?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Griggo?
Yes.
Ogle Tree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes, we'll see everyone Thursday. Thank you.
It's good to have Councilman Goodall making motions again. He's back in the saddle.
We knew it, Chris.
Yeah, yeah. Good night.